We're late. Get started with Price County Board of Supervisors, April meeting. Start off with the invocation, if everybody could please stand. Pastor Tennant, appreciate you being here.
Well, let's pray this morning. Father, today I I want to remind us about the victory that we can celebrate in you. I want to remind us that our hearts and our souls should take everything to the cross. So this morning, Father, as this assembly talks and shares their ideas, I remind them the purpose and the plans that you have for their lives, and that we should exalt you and give you glory in all things. And we do that this morning. We do take time and we are appreciative for the freedom that we have. But ultimately, our freedom comes through Jesus Christ, and we're thankful for that. And I pray that peace and grace over these people today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Here, Placaligans?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its foundation under God, in the name of the Lord.
Okay, we'll go ahead with the roll call.
All thirteen are present? Thank you.
Can you bring it up on the computer?
Oh, wait a second.
Everybody's here.
All thirteen are present? Thank you.
Okay. Communications and announcements. Do any supervisors have any communication or announcements they'd like to share? Do we have any public comments from the audience? We have two people signed up here. Renee Langfelder? This is for the public hearing, okay. Both, okay. So there's nobody else signed up for this portion of public comment. It is nine oh five, so we'll go ahead and start the public hearing. Rescind ordinance, chapter 511, land sales. Looking for motion to I guess we don't need a motion, we just want public comment. Open for public comment. Do any supervisors have any comment? Anybody in the audience? Okay, so there's no public comment. Anybody online?
Star six, if you want to unmute yourself.
So everybody understand what we're doing here and why we're rescinding this?
We'll talk about that in the ordinance part, so this is just the public hearing if.
Okay. All right. Seeing as there's no comment, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing for rescinding ordinance, chapter 511, land sales. It's a little early for start the next public hearing. So don't mind, we're going to skip down to presentations, employee recognition. Laura Paulskill?
Good morning. We have several employees to recognize this month, actually for March and April, both are who is on our on our list. So who is celebrating, okay, well, I'm just going to go with what's on the screen and we'll go in whatever order we're going to go. So we do have some of the folks we're recognizing here, so they're welcome to stand up if they would like, or not if they don't want to, that's okay too. But celebrating one year of employment, April twenty five, we have Katie McCardle, who is a Health and Human Services Assistant, and Kelly Little, who is an A D R C specialist. Next slide. Yep.
Can we do it without slides?
I sure can. Okay, so celebrating one year in March, where Megan Norris, who is our corp counsel, and Lita Mason, A D R C specialist, and Brenda Baldwin, who is A D R C specialist. Also, celebrating five years in, I had a five years in March and I missed it. To do, oh, no, I'm sorry, Brenda Baldwin was five years. I'm sorry about that. So yeah, then we, oh, there's Brenda. So she celebrates five years this past month in March. And then Suzie Franz, who is our Economic Support Specialist, will celebrate five years in April. So let's give them all a big round of applause. We are very thankful for their service.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Thank you, employees. We appreciate you. Okay, we're going to wait one minute yet roughly for the next public hearing. That's going to start at nine ten. Okay, so anybody's wondering, the silence is we're just waiting for the clock. It's not a technology issue this time. Okay, it's nine ten, public hearing, rescind ordinance, chapter four forty, taxation article two, delinquent tax foreclosure article or sale of tax-stated lands. Any comment from any supervisors? Any comment from the public? Anybody online? Star six to unmute. Okay, hearing done. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Still nine ten. Okay, the next public hearing is at nine fifteen, so we will wait until nine fifteen for that. Fred of Fred Smith and Grisnowitz.
You got it.
Can you do it in four or five minutes?
No.
No?
No, I need like fifteen. Should I wait?
Yeah, because we got to start that hearing at, well, I guess we can be late. Go ahead. We just have to start it. We can't start it early, but we can run it late.
Next, then I can go as long as I. All right, good morning. I'm Anne Grisnowitz. I am, my third year is working as the operations manager at the Wisconsin Concrete Park. So I work for the Friends of Fred Smith, which is the nonprofit organization that kind of oversees the park primarily operations and statue preservation and all kinds of good things. So we partner with Price County. So twenty twenty four is what I'm giving an update on. It was another exciting and busy year, primarily statue preservation. So that's our big focus because that's why the concrete park is here. So we hired two professional preservationists. We were able to budget a little bit more this year, so they came for six weeks. They stay at our apartment, which is above the Rock Garden Tavern, and then just work full days of doing extensive statue restoration. So if you've been to the park, you've seen some of the statues, you know, the ankles, they're narrow and skinny and they get weak because of the Wisconsin weather. So a lot of just kind of structural reinforcement, adding a new rebar into the ankles, the shoulders of the statues, on the animals, that kind of thing. We, this year, we also started repainting some of the two-dimensional bar relief plaques. So that's kind of an extensive process as well. There's color matching that's required because as preservation goes, you want to restore it and as close as possible to how the artist did it. So we color matched and then had to go get the specific paint at Sherwin-Williams, that was the process, of course, and then finding old vintage photos to recreate the picture. So if you've been to the park this year, you'll see some of the murals have fresh paint and they are looking beautiful. We also had hands and some of the statue faces repainted. So that was an exciting process to see those come to life. We were also able to hire two seasonal preservation assistants this year. So that was a high school gal named Kendra, who has committed to coming back this year as well. She has an art background, so she was able to help out with a lot of that painting. And then we hired another preservation assistant and he was able to do some of the kind of minor maintenance things as well as other preservation, like filling in cracks, replacing the glass that had fallen off, applying rust inhibitor to the metal. We had a lot of broken reins that were on the horses, so he was able to repair those, the wagon barrels. So I would just encourage you, if you haven't been to the park this year, come on by, come visit, because there's lots of great things happening. And it just looks fresh and welcoming and we get a lot of good comments about people saying, you know, thank you so much for preserving this. I remember coming, you know, years and years ago when I was a kid and now I'm bringing my grandkids. And it's just great to see that the park is still here and being preserved. Other park improvements that we did in twenty twenty four, we added some new signage just to kind of identify some of the buildings. We got a new sign on our Rock Garden Tavern that kind of correlates with the main entrance sign, the same theme, and that was designed by Signature Sign. We got a new directional sign. When you pull into the park, it's a nice big green sign and it says, has an arrow that says more parking and our center building that's in the back and then restrooms. And then we got a new sign to go on our, the studio building that's in the back of the park. So that building is used, my office is in there, but then we also use it for people rent it for private parties, we use it for workshops and just, you know, community events, that kind of thing. So we decided to rename it to the Friends of Fred Smith Center because the name studio was a little confusing to people. A lot of people would kind of peek in the windows and think that it was an art studio and art was being created. So to use the name center, it kind of incorporates it more of like a community building. So we got a new sign for that and then a very, very long process of redesigning our new site map. So we had an old site map that was just outdated and it had been artists rendered and hand drawn and it was, you know, nice, but really out of date. So I started working with the graphic design class at N C C in Wausau last winter, kind of gave them a bunch of pictures. We had Mark Peterson come and take some drone pictures of the overhead. I took a picture of every single statue, sent them this huge file, sent them the old site map and I, you know, I basically was like, create what you can. And they worked on it and that was part of their like spring project and got a really good start because we just needed, you know, something to get going. And so they created this template in this file and then their their semester was over. And so we still had a lot of work to do. So thankfully, one of our board members, Mary Jean Peterson's daughter, is a graphic designer, so she took time out of her schedule to kind of help finish up the site map. So she tweaked it a lot and made a lot of changes and that kind of thing. So it is completed. It is beautiful. We had a new large site map sign installed at the front of the park. So when you pull into that front parking lot and when you get out, it's right there, says, you know, you are here, it has all the statues, the main ones at least numbered and labeled, so people can kind of get a visual of where they are, where, you know, the trail is and that kind of thing. And then on the reverse side of that, we had Jan Favre. She's a photographer in the area. She took a bunch of pictures and made this beautiful picture collage that's on the reverse side. And then my husband and I installed this selfie sign, a selfie stand, and so you can put your picture or your camera there and then take a selfie and it has like Wisconsin Concrete Park right on the header. So people can, you know, take pictures and post on social media and we can get a little exposure that way. But I'm really happy with how it turned out and I think it's, it was a long project, but it was well worth it. Other improvements that we did, the Price County redid the the roof area where the site map is, so they added new roofing and kind of just shut up a little bit. So it looks very nice. Thank you for that. And then we got the driveway repaves, which was much needed and it was long overdue. So thank you so much for doing that. It's great and beautiful. And then the center building had a really bad acoustic problem because of the ceiling. And so at the end of the year, Friends of Fred Smith partnered with Price County to add a drop ceiling and new lighting into the center. So Josh and the guys in the Building and Grounds Committee, they did the labor. Thank you for that. And then Friends of Fred Smith paid for the materials. So it was really nice to kind of partner and get that project done. The building is much warmer and the echo has drastically reduced. So we're very thankful for that project. It was much needed and very nice to do. As far as servicing the community, we continue to offer art-based workshops monthly. We have done everything from check egg decorating, we have done stained glass workshops, acrylic painting, baking glasses, felting. And then I've put on some community events this year. So we did a large Halloween party. That was our, I think, third year doing it with the Haunted Trail Walk at the end. So we had a lot of local community members attend that. And then we do our candlelight walk as part of Winter Fest. And then I also put on a community celebration in September that was kind of to celebrate Fred Smith's birthday and then we had park tours, we had live music, we had some food trucks, and it was just kind of a celebration of Fred's birthday, but also to showcase some of the park improvements and things that have been happening. So we had a lot of people attend for that. It was a beautiful day, great weather. So that's always good. And then ongoing activities, I have a book walk that's set up on the nature trail. And so it's a deconstructed book that when you walk on the trail, you can read the story. And then also a scavenger hunt that was on the last kind of loop. So we had a lot of people participate in that and that was a lot of fun. I have the book walk ready to go this year too. I'm just waiting for the ground thaw a little bit more and then I'll be setting that out. We also serviced our, some school classes. So our Phillips fourth graders came out in May and they were able to see our preservationist kind of doing some work. And then that's part of their Wisconsin History Unit. So they get kind of a history of Fred Smith and the park. I do a PowerPoint presentation for them and then we toured them around and they did a little I spy activity and then they also did the book wagon scavenger hunt. So it was, it was fun to see them come out and we also had the girls' goal groups come out a couple of times, the after-school program kids came to the park. And then other schools have come too, including Athens and down in Medford. They, sometimes like if they're heading up to Ashland, they'll stop at the park and kind of take a stretch, tour around and then head up on their way. So for the year, I put on twenty-two workshops and events and that has totaled over twelve hundred people that participated this year. So I was really happy with those numbers. I also started doing Friday park tours in the summer. So on Friday at two P M, I just had an open call. If anybody wanted to stop by the park and have a tour, they were welcome. So we had over a hundred people participate in that over the summer. It was primarily people visiting to the area, but we also did get quite a few local people that were like, oh, wow, I didn't know that about Fred or, oh, I learned this interesting fact. So I will be doing that again this summer, probably over the middle part, like six or seven weeks. And then we also have bus groups that come to the park. So this is about forty to fifty people that come on a bus group. Typically, they're up in the Ashland Bayfield area. And then on their way home, they'll stop at the park. I give them a PowerPoint presentation, talk all about the history of the park. And then we go out on a tour and they shop in the gift shop and then we end with lunch catered typically by Phillips Cafe. We have lunch in the Rock Garden Tavern, so then they can kind of socialize and see that building. And so we had four bus groups come this year. Like I said, it's typically about forty to fifty people that come for that. The locations were down southern Wisconsin area and then Iowa and Illinois. So it's kind of nice to have those groups come through that probably wouldn't necessarily come to this area, but they're on their way back and this is a great tourist spot to stop. So kind of other things to note, we were on the Rhinelander, the W J F W news two times this year. They featured, what was it about? Kind of one was park statue preservation and then one was kind of upcoming events about the, I think during the Halloween party and that kind of thing. So news exposure, that was good. We also had a band called The Cactus Blossoms. They're based out of Minneapolis. So they actually, I didn't really realize this until after they came here, but they are, they travel nationwide. They even go up to Canada and they put on all these concerts and it's like this really popular band. They kind of play folksy type of music. But they reached out and they wanted to record a music video at the park. And so I said, absolutely, you know, come. And so they, they actually came for a Friday park tour and then they stayed overnight and then all day Saturday, they recorded their video. So if you want to look it up, it's on our Facebook page, Wisconsin Concrete Park. Otherwise, on YouTube, they're called Cactus Blossoms and then the music video is called Statues. So check it out. That was pretty cool to have them come here. We were also on PBS this fall, so there's a show called Wisconsin Life and the concrete park was featured. So look that up, just if you search PBS Wisconsin Life, it is the Wisconsin Concrete Park. That was pretty cool. That was a production. I'll tell you what, when they came, there was so much lighting, so many cameras. It was a very long process, this, especially the lady that was running the camera. She was very, you know, about having everything set up just right and we're just standing around and it's raining and we're waiting. But the feature ended up coming, turning out really well and I had people reaching out afterwards, you know, from, I I had lived in Oshrash for like eleven years and I had people saying, I saw you on PBS, what the heck is going on? So it was kind of nice to get that exposure. And then there's a YouTube channel called The Road Less Traveled Wisconsin, and so they also came up this summer and recorded kind of a long video about just the park itself and statue preservation. So they were a fun couple and it was kind of nice to film that video for them too, because exposure is great, right? Talking a little bit about financials, if you want to turn to the annual report, our P and L sheet, which is towards the back. Just a couple of things to note, just for your information. Our accountant had booked over fifteen thousand in capital gain distributions and dividend income. You might see that on there. Although it shows as income, there was no monies that were received in twenty twenty four. This was just a transaction that she put in to kind of catch up posting to reflect the growth in our endowment fund over the years. Our professional preservationist, we paid them twenty-seven thousand, so that was kind of a larger expenditure. And then our seasonal preservationist was about four thousand and then plus materials for preservation is kind of expensive. The Friends of Fred Smith paid for some tree removal and having the parking lot regravelled at the tavern because Price County owns and takes care of the trees and everything at the concrete park side, but the Rock Garden Tavern is the Friends of Fred Smith's responsibility. So that's about ten thousand dollars for that tree removal and gravel project. And then the new signage that we completed that I had talked about earlier, that totaled about five thousand. Other expenses was our workshops and events, about forty-seven hundred, which is kind of nice to see that larger number because it means, you know, we're offering these classes and events at free or low cost to the community. Kind of in comparison, in twenty twenty-three, that, that expense was about thirty-two hundred. And then in twenty twenty-two, it was only four hundred. So we've really kind of stepped it up as far as those offerings. So our budget this year going forward, we have been able to budget thirty-six thousand for preservation alone. So that's the professionals, our seasonal staff and then supplies. We've also budgeted five thousand for more signage. So when I started, we kind of came up with a three-year plan for improved signage at the park. We're in the third year now, so we're coming to the end of it. This year, what we're going to do is the large metal sign that's on the chain link fence that Fred had created. It says Wisconsin Concrete Park. He painted it. Unfortunately, it's not salvageable. It's just really, really rusted and kind of it's beyond repair. So Signature Sign is going to replicate it for us, a fiberglass sign in that size. And so we're going to have that on the fence and it will be a really close replication. So keep your eye out for that. It's going to look pretty cool. We're also going to get a sign for our garage workshop that's in the back of the park that says preservation workshop, because that's where all of our preservation supplies are and stuff. So then when people come to visit the park, they'll just kind of have the building identified and know, you know, what it is. And then the bathrooms in the back of the park, we're just going to get a restroom sign for that. And actually, Price County has offered to pay for half of that restroom sign. So thank you for that. And then we're also going to get statue plaques, numbered plaques that correlate with our new site map. So Signature Sign has found these really nice numbered, they're like five by seven and four by six. And so we're going to install them out of the way from the lawnmowers. But they'll correlate with the site map. And then I have redesigned the new self-guided brochure. And so when people come to the park, they can look at the big site map, but then we also have brochures that they can take with them and they can walk around and then see the correlated numbers. Oh, okay, so this is Paul Bonian. Okay, read a little bit about him and that kind of thing. So it's just more information for our visitors when they come, you know, so they can have a better idea of what things are and that kind of thing. And then finally, just a little information about the visitors. So we don't have a specific way to track visitors that come to the park, but we do have a sign-in sheet. And so I kind of process those numbers and we obviously have thousands of people that come to the park every year, so we're thrilled about that. We've had at least forty-two states, people have visited from at least forty-two states and over eight countries, including, what did I write here? Ireland, Germany, New Zealand, Mexico, Canada, Cuba, Taiwan, Czechoslovakia. Just like I mentioned before, reading those guest sign-in comments is just really encouraging if I'm feeling like, ah, I don't want to work today or whatever. Just reading those and how people are just thrilled that the park is just so cool and, you know, inspiring and they're just so thankful that it's preserved, kind of keeps me going. And also, if you're ever curious on what people's opinions are of the concrete park, go to Google and read the reviews because those are always glowing, you know, people are like, this is such a great, you know, hidden gem, diamond in the rough. It's, so I would encourage you, if you're bored and, you know, late at night, can't sleep, go on Google and read the reviews because the, a lot of people come and appreciate it. And so I think, you know, that just encourages us to keep doing what we're doing and keep fighting the good fight. So that's my presentation. What questions do you guys have? Are we ready to move on?
Anybody have any comments or questions?
That was a very dynamic presentation.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, it sounds like the park is very well received by the community and the surrounding world, actually, which is great. Think you're doing a great job and appreciate all your work and keep it up.
Thank you. Yeah, I get told, wow, you're really passionate. How long have you worked there? And I was, I'm like, oh, two and a half years. Oh, that'll, that'll fade. I'm like, no, I don't think so. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the public. Okay, we're going to move on to the public hearing that was originally scheduled for nine fifteen. Uh, it's now nine thirty-two. Adopt ordinance draft twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, an ordinance to replace. Chapter five eleven land sales and to replace chapter four forty taxation, article two, delinquent tax and tax foreclosure. Article four, sale of tax-deeded lands. Any supervisors have any comments? Are there any comments in the audience? Renee?
Good morning. Renee Leinfelder from the town of Ogama, but also as your county treasurer. So just a couple of of comments. We've gotten some calls in the treasurer's office regarding requests to purchase properties that are already in the county's name. So one suggestion that I would like for your consideration and discussion would be to, for those properties that we would be able to sell. Back to the families, back to the owner prior to the auction, to have a a lower price than what we have in our ordinance now. Perhaps something three to five hundred dollars that would still cover the updated title work that would be needed as well as the re-recording of the deed and some of our time.
So they're requesting for an amendment, possibly when we go to approve the uh new ordinance?
Yep, the ordinance draft, as it states now, the two thousand dollars for all of our.
Correct.
Time and effort. So if we're able to do it before the auction.
Yep, the reason being because we'll have less expenses.
Yes.
Incurred, so we're just want to lower it, but still get what we've got into it.
Cover those costs that are needed to have it go back to the previous owner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody online that ha- has any comments? Star six, when mute? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the meeting, nine thirty-four. Or I should say, hearing. Moving along, public hearing that was scheduled for nine twenty. Amend ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero four, authorize the operation of a state highway bridge. Amend an ordinance to amend the code of Price County by amending chapter four seventy-three entitled vehicles and. And traffic, article four, all-terrain vehicle routes to include four seventy-three dot one five, authorize the operation of a state highway bridge. And I'll just make one quick comment. This is just uh, I guess, kind of say routine. We've already approved this. We're just amending it to uh comply with verbiage that was requested by the DOT. So we can get that bridge open. Or traffic, that's south of Airport Road and F. Is there any comments from the board? Any from the audience? Anybody online? Mr. Polczek?
Mr. Chairman, I think.
Thank you. I think we should put a date on for opening it after the construction project is completed. I don't think we need to add to the, to the mix there this summer with UTVs. I'm all in favor of opening it, but not until the construction project is completed. Just throwing it out there for something to think about.
Okay, yeah, we can discuss it when we board on approving it. Never thought about that, but that, in my opinion, is a good idea. Any other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this hearing at nine thirty-six. Next up, uh, under presentations, number three, Price County Fair Annual Report twenty twenty-four.
I haven't seen anybody, I know you're not representing the fair as Michelle is on the board. But uh, we did get a report from them that we can send out, um but I haven't heard from them in a week.
Okay, I guess anybody wants to see the report, contact Nick. You'll see, make sure you get it. Move on to the next one, uh Buck Tussel update. Yesterday, uh Mitch called, said he wasn't going to be able to make it, so we're going to postpone Buck Tussel's presentation till our May meeting. They're still going to meet virtually and discuss tower location and uh best towers to put equipment for the uh sheriff's department, emergency management and that like. That's going to be today at noon, correct Nick?
Yeah, we're still meeting. Uh, it'll be the sheriff, Robert Hahn, uh, two people from Motorola, two people from Northway. And then uh Buck Tussel will be at that meeting.
Okay, anybody have any, can't really answer the questions regarding that, but any comments? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next, approval of minutes from February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Polczek, second by Grobnik. Any discussion regarding the meeting minutes? Hearing no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Everybody? Go ahead.
Motion passed, thirteen yes, zero no. Thank you.
Okay. Where we gone? To ordinance, first one, rescind ordinance, chapter five one one land sales. We just had the public hearing on that. Looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Erickson. Second by Barkstrom. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
All votes are in, passed by majority vote, thirteen yes, zero no, for ordinance one rescinding chapter five eleven.
Do we have a uh ordinance number? Do we have to put an ordinance number in the record or? Okay. Number three. Adopt ordinance draft twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, an ordinance to replace chapter five eleven land sales and replace chapter four forty. Taxation, article two, delinquent tax foreclosure, article four, sale of tax-deeded lands. Looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Kopisch, second by Polczek. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
And motion passed, thirteen yes, zero no, to rescind ordinance, chapter four forty, article two and article four.
Okay, moving along. Think I read it wrong, first, last one, but we're on number three. I'll reread it. Adopt ordinance draft twenty twenty-five zero zero one, ordinance to replace chapter five eleven land sales and replace chapter four forty. Taxation, article two, delinquent tax foreclosure, article four, sales of, sale of tax-deeded lands. Motion by Hordek, second by Grobnik. Any discussion? Nick?
So with this, uh, there's a motion um to put this new ordinance in place. We, what Renee brought up this morning, we had met and talked about over the last month. Uh, but the process is we can't change the ordinance that is presented because it's not the ordinance that was approved at executive to be brought forward. So what Renee was bringing up is what we wrote in blue on page five. So when a property is redeemed either through auction, right now through auction, in order to c- for the county to cover its costs. Uh, so that's the first paragraph or the first dot on page five. So through auction, property sells, we as a county need to recover Evan's time, Meredith's time, Renee's time, my time. Buildings and grounds time, anybody who worked on this, so we don't have to track it hour by hour, we put a two thousand dollar fee. So it goes to auction, there's a two thousand dollar fee, that gets netted out of the total cost before we give the, the remaining amount to the family. Or to the past owner. So if it was ten thousand dollars in taxes, we would say it's ten thousand in taxes, no specials, two thousand dollars in. Uh, this cost to us doing the work and getting it ready. So there'd be a twelve thousand dollar total cost to that property. We sell it for fifteen thousand. We would give, we'd write a check for three thousand dollars to the past owner. So that's how we get paid on an auction. What we didn't take into account was when a family comes to redeem or anybody comes to redeem a property prior to the auction. To go back into the, the, the ownership of the previous owner. So if it's my parents' property, they didn't pay, I find out about it, I come and pay, it goes back into my parents' name. It doesn't go into the payer's name, it goes into the past owner's name. And then we wouldn't have had any fees to cover those people that we talked about before. So what we're recommending, based on our, our meetings, was between three and five hundred dollars, we put four hundred. You guys can pick what the amendment would be, but something to cover, because it's less cost than if we go to auction. If it goes to court, we know we're going to have to do the, the, if someone comes in prior to the auction, we have to go back to the title company to put everything in their name. We have to do the deed, but it's less day-to-day work to get up to the auction. We're covering at least the feed cost that, problem is, we don't get those bills until after somebody pays up, so we couldn't put it on the property. So the amendment, there, there needs, well, we're recommending as a team that met to, to make a uh amendment to the ordinance that's presented. That's something within that blue where it, it puts a fee on if it doesn't go to auction, but it goes back into the prior owner's name that the county gets reimbursed for their, their costs.
So to move forward, uh, if we wanted to implement what's in blue on page five. We need a motion to amend.
Yeah, as presented or?
As, as presented or however you want to do it. If you want to change the four hundred to five hundred, need a motion to amend what was presented in the original motion. Motion by Barkstrom. Have a second. Basic second. Yeah, yeah, we're going to have a pub- uh, comments now, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I need, I, I'm not quite understanding here. Um, the process ha- ends up with a date of last redemption prior to going to court. So when is this property getting purchased?
Anytime from then till court date.
And so the la- the last redemption's gone, so they've had all these chances to, to take the pri- now you're going to let them do it before, between that date?
And the, and the court date. And the auction.
And the auction.
Yep, so.
How is that allowed if you already had a date of last redemption?
Because it, we determined when we talked, so you could still hold a later, uh, date of last redemption. The problem is, the family always has the advantage at the auction. Because no matter what they pay, they get the money back.
Yeah.
So instead of going through the auction and doing all the stuff, the, the state's recommending that. That family can come and redeem, as long as they redeem all back taxes and all fees, it's back to normal. It'd be no different to going to auction and having that same family bid a million dollars and get all their money back.
Okay, so they pay all that's cost.
Everything in full.
And instead of the additional costs for the, the, it's covered by the two thousand dollars, you say our cost will be less, so you're going to charge them four hundred. So they're going to pay all the costs, but they, which they should have done in the first place, right?
Correct.
And then you're going to charge them four hundred dollars.
Yep.
And, and this fits all the new legislation and everything that we can do it.
The only two differences that you'll, I mean, the, the difference is you can redeem up till we go to auction. That, that's a huge difference from last day to redemption to auctions, like four months, it's a big chunk. Either way, the family would get it back if they went to auction, overpaid, they get all the proceeds, so whatever. So that's why this is the termination, why it's different. The biggest difference from bef- well, a difference from before, up till that court date, you as a family member, as the person that owns the property. Could pay the third year out to remove it from that, where once the court date happens, you owe all of it. So there is, that court date does create a penalty, or it's not a penalty, but a, a different amount that's due. So say I owed three thousand dollars for one year taxes, three thousand, three thousand. Up until the court date, all I have to do is pay three thousand and then I'm still two years behind, but I'm off the sys- off the process. Now, the court date hits, you pay all nine thousand plus fees plus everything to, to get your property back.
The big difference, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Brecker?
So uh, when Renee spoke before, she said that this change would cover all of our fees and I believe she used the statement, majority of our time. Um, so I guess my point would be that with the, the comment that they've had all this time to make sure we recover all of our costs. So that would be my only concern, that we're lowering it to a point where we're not covering.
Yeah, and you guys can pick a, you could pick seven fifty, you could pick a thousand, you can pick.
The motion was made. But in order to pick that, I think we need some information on what our costs are, how much time do we put into this? What is the typical, because setting an arbitrary number without having that information is.
Yeah, we picked, we said that distance at three, because each uh, each property is different, right? If it's an in-town property, there's more cost to it. The, the only difference is if, say it's in town, we can add stuff as we go, so it would keep adding up. Um, the biggest thing is the title search, that's the additional, and Renee, if you want to chime in at all. The, the title search is about a hundred and seventy-five bucks, so we know that's in there. The legal fees to, that they're dealing with, that's always been up in the air, like the hard part. So say we send forty properties to legal to put, to do the court case. By the time we get to the court case, people have paid and we might be down to twenty, but we haven't gotten the bill. Those twenty properties pay the whole bill, because it's whatever's left at the date that we get the bill. So there's always times where you kind of get, oh, you know, if you come in and pay, you don't pay the additional fees. Um, that's why we pick between that three fifty to five hundred. One, we're not supposed to pick the fee, you guys are supposed to set the fee. But two, it does cover that, that title work, the deed, which is thirty bucks. And then a lot of these properties, when we know they're going to be bought back, it's minimal work. So it's not like five of us get together every week to work on these properties. It'll be a hour here, hour there. It, a lot of the time comes when Evan has to prepare the book for auction. Um, it's traveling, going out there, it's, it's after the court date, we usually have a lot of time because we're going and securing the properties, so.
So.
I understand your question.
Yeah, and, and just to get back to that then, so if I understood correctly before with Bob's question, they can purchase anytime up to the auction.
Up to the auction at when, yeah, yes.
So, and theoretically, we could have all those expenses from preparing the book for auction and all that. And that somebody come in the day, day before the auction and say, I'm going to purchase it back.
You could, yes.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure I am understanding this with setting the fee, how we're getting to the, how we're going to get to that dollar amount to set that fee.
I would say, Renee, we know, I mean, you, you're getting the calls, I'm getting the calls, um Evan's getting the calls. We know the second these properties are on the list or either. Uh, through the first, the, the first redemption, those calls start happening immediately with family members go, can I? We've had people just send money, like they don't know what it, they, four thousand bucks, they just sent and said, this should be enough. And it's like, one, it wasn't enough and two, we don't have this in place yet. So there is the possibility that that one is going to come the day before the auction, but though. It, we know which properties are somebody's watching.
And is it possible that it could be some aren't going to cost the county?
Yeah, like a forty in the middle. A forty in the middle of nowhere is going to cost you almost nothing. It's the houses, it's the, um, we had some with an easement.
Okay, yeah, thanks for the information.
Just Kopisch.
Yeah, and uh going on what Georgia said, what if you phrase this a little differently? Why don't you have uh four hundred dollars or actual cost, whichever is greater?
We could do that if there's one property that's just out of.
So.
I think that's a good idea.
Could I amend what, the amendment then, or is that how you want to go?
Sure.
Okay, I won't make that motion to amend this, to read that way, that uh. My, the fee shall be four hundred dollars or whatever the administrative costs are, whichever is greater.
My only que- my only question to that is, is everything?
My only que- my only question to that is, is everything documented? Do we, I mean, do we, do we do every hour, every minute, you know?
We would.
Fifteen-minute cra- you know, counting sessions, you know, like, how are we gonna know what number is greater?
Yeah, we can, what we'll do, and we can tell.
Paperwork nightmare, you know?
It, it's gonna create a nightmare if we did it for everyone, just to see which is more expensive. What I would recommend is we as a group have done this for a long time. We know what properties are going to be expensive, whether it's additional legal fees, or something like that. Those we could document and follow. Um, it's usually pretty easy to catch it. I wouldn't recommend doing paperwork for every 40, every random one. Need a second, technically.
Got a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
That, that needs to be taken care of.
I don't disagree, I just wanna make sure that that's.
Before we get into too much discussion, you gotta take care of the motion.
Okay, I'm gonna have Meredith read Mr. Koppish's amendment to the amendment.
Let me double check. Oh, I have amendment to the amendment, $400 fee, or the actual cost, whichever is greater. Is that correct? Thanks.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the amendment to the amendment?
Need a second.
We did Jordan.
Oh, I thought you just were talking. Oh, okay.
Well, we.
I don't disagree with it, but I just want to know that they know that there's gonna be more documentation, which is gonna cost more time, you know, so, just so, just so that they're aware of that ahead of time.
Yeah, we'd only do it for when we know. There, we know, there's certain houses you just know, or certain properties that start to add up real quick.
Okay, we'll try and circle back here. Mr. Koppish made a motion to amend the amendment. Second by Spasic. We've had discussions. Is there any more discussion on amending the amendment? Mr. Brecker?
I would just reiterate what they were talking about there, that, and I don't know if it needs to be in the amendment or not, but, um, to give Renee and the administrative the authority to not have to track every single project. But if we get to that point, to where we're talking, where we're doing the, the book for the auction and things like that, where we're getting to the final stages of it, that's when we start tracking expenses, would be my suggestion. Um, just so that we're not creating what Jordan has said, that we're creating more problems by having this. Um, you know, recoup a, spend $10 or a group of pennies, so that's just my thoughts.
So should we make it understood? It's treasurer's discretion? Do we need to put that in that amendment?
I think we understand the intent. The, we just need to get something on paper, because we are getting close to the timeline. Because the problem with the timeline right now is we have to distribute some of the properties we've had. Um, and then we have another one, July 18th, that we're, the, the auction date is, and from that date starts a new time clock for those. So we need something on the books. We can always, just like we just, we did with the four-wheelers that are coming back. We once we get this out there, we now have a guideline, we're gonna see hiccups, we're gonna have to probably clarify some stuff going forward, but this gets us in compliance.
Okay, so we can leave the amendment to the amendment as is, but, uh, on record, unless somebody has objection, the, it's at the treasurer's discretion if the, uh, the charges are gonna be detailed or not. That makes sense? It's not gonna be in the motion, but, okay, we're gonna vote on the amendment to the amendment. Read it back one more time, please. Unless there's somebody else that has a comment.
Okay, I have motion by Koppish, second by Spasic, to amend the amendment to ordinance draft 2025-01. To have an administrative fee of $400, or the actual cost, or whichever, which, whichever is greater.
$100, or the cost, whichever's greater, yeah.
Whoever's greater, okay.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on that. Can we do it on the computer, or do you wanna?
We can do that on the computer.
Okay.
Motion passed, 13 yes, zero no, to adopt ordinance draft 2025-01 with the amendment.
So basically, we just voted on the.
The amendment to adopt, yes. So the a moment, the amendment to the draft 2025-01.
So now you have to vote on the original amendment that's been updated, so there should be a yes or no on the amendment.
Go back to the original motion, second.
Original amendment, yeah.
Yeah, motion to amend. Is there any discussion regarding that? Clear as mud, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It's Megan on the, on phone, I apologize. Um, I'm wondering if we could include language that indicates that it's at the treasurer's discretion of when we do the or greater, or if that can at a minimum be in the minutes very clear, just so that we have that end of it documented. More so than just talking about it here.
Could you identify yourself, please?
It was Megan Norris.
Oh, it was Megan, okay, I didn't get.
So it, it is, it'll be in the ordinance that's the discretion of, so we don't need, I mean, we can clarify that it's the treasurer, but really it should be a group of individuals that are doing this. You could amend to put the treasurer's name in there, but we've, our, it's administrative, whichever one's greater, the administrative fees or the $400. It, we can determine who's tracks that, could, it might be Evan tracking, it might be Carrie. Carrie does a lot of that stuff when we do it, so the group, the treasurer ultimately, in the new thing, does have the how, how it's sold. So there is a lot of things leading to that individual making the decision. I, I don't know, we don't wanna pick out each little step and pick somebody that's doing it. It, it should be a whole as a county.
I'm okay with that. I, that's why I just wanted on record that.
Yeah.
We talked about it, and for the future, uh, the intent is at least stated, even if it's not in the amendment. So, does anybody else have any comments? Mr. Hallstrand?
Mister Chairman, I just wanna clarify that in executive, the reason we picked the number 2,000 was because we knew some were gonna be high and some were gonna be low, and we picked that number in between to to level the playing field, so to speak, but I just, not everybody may have known that, so I'm just.
And that's kinda the way this number of 400 was chosen too. Some are gonna be higher, some are gonna be lower. Sort of, even though, is that what you, is that your point?
My point was, I wanted everybody in the room to know where the number 2,000 came from. We knew some were gonna be lower, some were gonna be higher, and we picked 2,000.
Anybody else?
But.
Okay.
To, to question that, though, that 2,000 is based on it going to the sale. This is before the sale, so that's, that's where the difference in the numbers are.
Yeah, and by the time it goes to sale, we have usually the legal fees, we have all, we have a lot in there, so.
Yeah, we have additional costs that we need to cover. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote the original motion to amend 2024-04 with the amendment, amendment. Amended amendment as approved. Go ahead.
So, I'm just asking the question then, since we did kind of what Bob just said with it, before it goes to sale, but then when Jeff echoed the 2,000, where that came from, if there's ones that are costing us more than $2,000, why are we not recouping that cost then? And adding the verbiage that Bob said, if there is ones that cost more, charging that?
I, I don't believe there'll be any that cost more unrecognized cost than $2,000. And what I mean by that is, by the time it gets to auction, so for example, we're doing the, the, the group right now, so we're doing legal fees right now, we're doing, looking at the properties, getting whatever. So by the time it gets to auction, um, or it'll go to court July 18th, 19th, we'll have all the legal bills that can go on to that, uh, before we reconcile it. So what happens with these ones that we go before, is we don't get a lot of those bills upfront. So it's usually as a bulk bill, so it's less likely to go over, it's just that we have running around costs, we have things like that, that we don't track. This is all the costs we don't track on a hourly basis that we could, but it's whoever said it over here, it's a lot of nickel and diming paperwork. I would not worry about not hitting, covering our costs on those that go to auction, because we have plenty of time to wait for the bills to come in. So if you come in today to pay it, we have to put it back in your name today. If you get it at auction, we don't have to write you that check, we have a, like a 30 days or 60 days, so we have plenty of time to make sure all costs are on that reconciliation. So that's the difference.
Okay, anybody else? We've already voted. I'll go ahead and let Meredith.
Okay, motion passed, um, 13 yes, zero no, to adopt ordinance draft 2025-01, 001, as amended.
I'm sorry, what?
So you just accepted the amendment to it, now we're back to an original ordinance, so you have to have one more vote. So the original, or original motion was to put it on the floor. The second motion was to make an amendment. The third motion was to amend the amendment. You voted on the first one, so now you're back, you are down to the second, which is an amendment of the amendment. You now just voted on the amendment to the amendment to get it back to an original state. So it's the original motion is now to approve this as amended twice. Everybody followed that, right?
Any questions regarding the procedure here?
So I have a question, because I'm going to send it to a revote, but I'm writing it in my notes. And are we going to keep the same motion and second, from the original motion and second?
Yes, that is true.
Okay. So we're going to keep, um, Hodak and Drabnik motion and second.
Yeah, they were the original one that put it on there. Everybody else changed it, but we're back to, they originally put some, something forward to be discussed.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
And the motion passed, 13 yes, zero no, to adopt ordinance draft 2025-001, as amended. Thank you.
And we did this, so the prop, we went through all the proper steps, did all the amendments. A lot of times what you'll see is people just do friendly amendments. This was an ordinance, so it's very difficult not to just make sure we hit all the Ts and cross the Is, where normally you might change it three times and just go, cool, we amended it. It's more of a discussion. This was the proper procedure, um, and we, it was an, an ordinance, so we wanted to keep it even cleaner.
Okay, we'll move on to the next ordinance. Number four. Men ordinance 2024-04, authorize the operation of a state highway bridge. Men ordinance to amend the code of price county by amending chapter 473, entitled vehicles and traffic, article four, all train vehicle routes. To include 473 dot one five, authorize the operation of a state highway bridge. Motion by Hordak, second by Drabnik. Discussion. Mr. Palchek?
This has been a, a long way around for, for this ordinance. I would amend to have the language in there that, uh, the opening date is set at the end of the construction project this summer. There is a way around, they can go airport road.
Well, that's what everybody's doing now, supposedly, supposed to do.
Yes.
Mr. Hasting?
You have in there that it's up to the discretion of the city of Phillips, I think they would, um, be sufficient in calling that.
Any other thoughts? Not yet, uh, we're just kinda, I discuss, I, I asked for discussion. Well, I didn't know that he made a motion. Okay. Mr., uh, Warko, second the mo- motion to amend. Any discussion on the amendment?
Now I'll discuss.
I guess who has the, my question is, who has the authority to delay the opening? Is it us?
It would just be based on the ordinance, um, passing, so I would ra- if, if I know you've already amended, but really to clarify the amendment, it would be under section three effective date, the ordinance shall take place effective as of the date of publication, but no sooner than whatever date you want.
Go ahead, Mr. Hallstrand.
Mister Chairman, I, I believe, and I could be wrong on this, but when we open that up to the ATVs, that road will be closed until the end of the project, irregardless to, is it not? It, is, is Highway 13 gonna be closed?
No.
No.
Single lane traffic.
Open, alright.
Single lane traffic also.
I guess that was a question then.
June 9th to August something.
So, Mr. Koppish?
Yeah, I, I was understood that they weren't going all the way down that far with the highway. I thought they were gonna go just around the corner up here.
Sidewalks.
Oh, the sidewalks?
Sidewalks are from the grocery store to the R store, or to Ross's, so before that.
Oh, but the whole highway's.
Highway 13 from D to Park, well, Field.
Oh.
Yeah, so there's two projects, yeah. Well, there's three, three construction projects this summer. One is D to F, and then there's north of, um, it's not F to forward, but it's, uh, Quick Trip. It's right after Quick Trip, all the way to Field. So they're skipping a little section from F to to the Quick Trip.
So the, the stuff in the city here is going all the way past.
Oh, yes.
Past that intersection by the Harborview.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that's a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think we're all in agreement. I guess, how do we wanna word this till we get the right opening date? How do we specify? Do we say, uh, when construction has ceased? Reconstruct, huh, or?
Michelle and I have comments.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Mr. Hallstrand's first though. Okay, Mr. Drabnik?
Okay, um, I just know when they were working on Highway 8, the four-wheelers and the UTVs, they all just sat in line, like, good little people, and waited with the line of cars, and then they went through down the road. So I don't see an issue why it would need to be delayed. As long as, but then if people don't pay attention to rules, then that's why we have the other building over here, right?
And just, Spasic. Can I play devil's advocate? And the fact that had this gone through last year, we wouldn't reshut it down for the project, would we? I mean, had, I mean, had it not come back for the 13th time, or whatever this resolution is, in the last year and a half, we would just let it go through. So I don't know that we need to, I, I guess this, to me, this is the city's deal, not our deal. We're moving the ordinance on. It's, it's, should be up to them to decide, yes, it can be or can't be open.
Anybody else?
There are two timelines that don't really get specified on here. One is that it's publication, so just because it's, if, if it were to be passed today, it doesn't go into effect today. It has to be published, and I don't know if it's a class three, class two, it, it's a, there's a timeline for publication, so it goes to the newspaper uh, to let citizens know that this has happened. And then they also have to be signed. So this, you can't just start using it until the ATV club, who's responsible for the cost of the signage, and I believe Highway puts it up, but the signs have to be purchased by the ATV club. The Highway still has to put them up, then it is officially open. So there's two, two more timelines to be hit with this. It's not as of today, if you vote yes.
Any more discussion regarding amendment to the amendment?
And furthermore, didn't they just fix that bridge like two years ago?
Mr. Brecker?
So, yeah, that's the roadway, and to, and to go off a next statement there too, um, I believe that the DOT has to issue the signing permit also, which can take some time. So, um, this, yeah, it's gonna take some time to get this through anyway. So just a just some information.
Any more discussion on the amendment to the amendment?
Before you can vote on the amendment, you gotta pick a date or a verbiage, just so that we know. What is, what's your voting?
Right now I have, um, to amend the ordinance, effective ordinance as as of date of, no, 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 sorry, amend the opening date and set the end of highway project through the summer.
Mr. Palchek, you have any additions or changes?
Mr. Chairman, I would withdraw my amendment. And we can throw all caution to the wind and let, let them get through however they want to get through there.
Okay, procedure wise, I guess if you, the, the original motion has been rescinded.
He was the original motion.
Not the original one, the, the, the original amendment to the amendment. So we're back to the, what's stated on item number four under ordinances.
With as fast as the state works, it might be later than September anyhow.
Correct.
So be it.
Any further discussion? Oh, we need a second to rescind motion by Palchek to rescind the amendment to the amendment? Second by Bracka? I'm just going to do a voice vote. All those in favor of rescinding the amendment to the amendment? Do you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're back to the original motion to amend the ordinance. Motion voice. Hordak, second by Dravnik. Any more discussion? This is, well, it's an amendment to the original one that we passed. What was it? November?
Yeah. So we got to this point because you guys have passed this once. The state received it, didn't like some of the verbiage. So the city had to re-pass it, which in order for us to pass something, the city has to have it on their books. City passed it a month and a half ago or two months ago. So now it's in front of you to amend the original one. Cause it never went out and never completed.
Okay. There's no further discussion. We'll go ahead and vote.
Motion carried. Motion carried thirteen yes, zero, no to amend ordinance twenty twenty four oh four.
Okay, moving along. Let's, does anybody need to take a break? Okay. Resolutions, number one. Resolution termination of easement town of Worcester tax ID number twenty one, two forty four. One, three, four, six, nine, two, tax ID two, one, two, one, three, one, three, six, one, eight, four. This came from forestry originally, and then it went through executive last week. And here we have it now. Uh, we do have the town chair from Worcester, Jim McClure. Would you like to come up and say anything?
Hey, with this number of people getting agreement is a, an achievement in itself. We have enough fun with the board of three.
So Jim brought this to my attention a couple of months ago. Um, do you want to talk about the property and why you brought it forward?
Okay, the town of Worcester, uh, has a twenty-five acre parcel, uh, near the north end of Solberg Lake. Uh, and that parcel is doing nothing for the town, just sitting there. So we decided as a board to sell it. And, uh, in the process of putting together for sale, uh, it was found that there's a nineteen forty-eight easement to the county for access across that property to the county forest. County forest is on three sides of that property. So East Solberg Lake Road is on the fourth side. The county forest has, the county has access to the property right now from two sides, from an ATV trail to the northeast and from Pine Tree Lane to the north. And they have used that access when they logged adjacent to that property several years, about three, four years ago. So I asked if there's, if they could, uh, remove that easement to make it, uh, to remove the last let the last little cloud on the titles. So did I summarize that right?
Yep. And, and one of the reasons to remove the, so we brought it to forestry. Joe looked at it. There was no issues uh, with access to the county forest or for logging. Um, but when I was, what I was explaining is if someone were to go build on that property, they couldn't build and it goes almost right down the middle, the easement. So if you were to go build, you would, you, you couldn't because there's an easement. This makes the property much more valuable to the, to Worcester because it's a buildable. It creates a different buildable lot.
Does anybody have any questions for Jim? Mr. Koppish? Oh, I thought you raised your hand. Well, first we need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Okay, move along.
You snort as you lose.
Motion by Dravnik, second by Spasic, Koppish is slow. Any further discussion? Anybody have any comments at all?
Last thing is we did use the same legal representation. We found there was no conflict of interest, anything like that. We used Ritz, uh, offered, what is Slavy Data Ritz? Um, that was all taken care of by town of Worcester, uh, but she did represent us also in the, the process.
Okay, Mr. Hastings.
Didn't you guys, uh, mention there's a Bugtussel tower going out there too?
Yeah, all right. Uh, I met two representatives from Bugtussel there probably last, late last summer, early fall. And they made lots of verbal promises. And, uh, I made some comments. I says, first off, uh, there's a fiber optic cable running right along the road. Um, and they look a little discouraged. I said that, uh, uh, verbal promises are nice, but we need something in writing. They looked a little more discouraged. And I says, oh, by the way, all three board, town board members have business experience. They looked even more discouraged and I have yet to see anything in writing from them. Uh, but three months later, I got a phone call, uh, from Bugtussel. She's telling me they're still interested. Uh, I says, uh, we're, uh, voting on having a vote in like a couple of weeks on selling that property or some details of selling it. I says, we need something in writing from you. Uh, I never did get anything in writing. Uh, they wanted to put a, a three hundred foot tower, hundred fifty feet from the road. Uh, not going to happen. Um, I, uh, uh, I said that, and I said this to them in an email that if they want to put a tower on that property, let us know. But you're going to be putting on the far northeast corner, which is as far from the road as you can get. They specifically said they did not want to put a tower in at that location. I have seen nothing from them in writing since. Um, let's see, what else? Um, oh, yes. Uh, and by then we had decided as a board to divide that property into, at the time, approximately nine lots. Um, they would be have the option of buying of that particular lot. Um, the board has decided that, that, uh, it'll be for residential, its own residential. Uh, we could still at that time, nothing, not, it's still not locked down. We could give them the option of putting a tower on. It would have to be in a particular location, a far northeast corner of the property. Uh, at which, if they bought the lot, uh, they would have the option of putting a tower on and then selling the lot with an easement for their tower. Um, uh, but that would be up to them. I have seen nothing from them in writing. So as it stands right now, uh, um, uh, we have not yet. Uh, forget the, I don't know the legal term, but we have not yet done the paperwork to make it legally residential only. That's what we're going to do, but it's not on the deeds yet because it's not been surveyed off. That's in, work is in progress. So there, we still have the option of get, selling them, leasing them, an easement for putting a tower in. But we've heard nothing from them in writing. And as we move farther along, once these lots are sold and the residential thing is on there, um, that makes it even more difficult for them to, uh, put a tower on that property.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? Hearing none, go ahead and vote. Mr. Koppish, are you thinking?
Um, motion passed thirteen yes, zero, no for the termination of easement of town of Worcester.
Okay. Moving along, number two, resolution, lower Steve Creek Floyd Dam enumeration signatory designation. Came from forestry, then went through executive. And here we are, motion by Dravnik, second by Hallstrand. Any discussion?
Uh, the only clarification on this one, um, is it did still pass out of the forestry committee. Uh, there was some confusion, I think, on signatures. Uh, and so going forward at committee levels, if you vote no on something, we don't sign the resolution. Just the, the clerk will put no, uh, or if you're abstaining or excused. Uh, cause what can happen with the record? So in this case it was signed, there was a no on it. Um, we don't know if it was signed and noted later and we watched the video and we can't indicate that that individual said no at any time. But what, what could happen is you could go back in the record and go, I want to see the original resolutions from three meetings ago and you could just write no next to it. And so going forward, we don't write, we'll just make sure the procedure is if you vote no, you just don't sign. But this did pass. So we did clarify that with three votes, it would pass out of forestry.
And we're basically this given forestry, the authorization to negotiate or to sign.
Yeah. So we could talk about that quick. So the DNR needs a signature, or well, the whole process with all the grants, they, we need a signator, um, for the county. So this, uh, resolution makes the forest, um, so Joe's position, not Joe himself, but Joe's position, just in case this was a three-year project and Joe was no longer here or something like that. So it makes the position, the signator. The other thing that came up is they, the DNR would not allow us to put a limit. And this was just more discussion. It was in a different area. We cannot put a limit on what the, the total project would be. Um, because what they're asking for is that, are you committed to this project, um, through the process? And so we originally, which we've made it very clear to Joe, we've made it clear to everybody that seven fifty was our limit. Now, if all the bids came in at eight fifty, we'd stop the process. We'd, we'd owe the engineered cost and then we could go back and do the removal for free. Um, that's a different grant. Um, but right now all indication is we're way below the seven fifty, but we can't put the limit on because they won't, they won't bid it out and they won't do the grant unless you're saying we're a partner and you're guaranteeing we're, we're doing this.
So we're kind of giving forestry a blank check. But the checks and balances are we can, we can.
We can still stop. We can't stop.
If we do stop it, we'll be on the hook for the, uh, engineering costs so far.
Right. Well, we can't get two thirds of the way through and then stop is what they, what they're guaranteeing you.
Mr. Hastings.
I voted no on this because that decision to double the project size of the Salberg Lake expansion. We only okayed six hundred and fifty thousand in this room and the decision to double that with matching grants uh, was made in a back room somewhere. I mean, there's no record of it. It's, it's a significant upgrade in, uh, the dollar amount that the taxpayers are paying for. So that was the reason why I voted no. I think it's important that this legislature body is the one that makes the decisions on where money is spent.
Mr. Hordak, you have a comment?
Uh, just a real quick question, Mr. Spasic, were you remote, excused?
Uh, my wife was in labor.
So you're excused?
I was just the driver though.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Bracka.
So is this the same as?
I did try to get in that day, but of course that's the day that my, uh, thing kicked out and I didn't have my little keypad to get in. I did watch it live. Tammy had it. By the time I got everything figured out, I, I did watch it, you know, but no, we were in the hospital with the baby then.
Wait a minute, you watched it while your wife was in?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not the one doing the work. I.
Okay, moving along.
She was doing the work. I, I was there for support.
Mr. Bracka.
So a couple of questions here. Um, is this the same type of grant process that we go through for, uh, airport improvement projects where we have to give the signator to move forward with the grant is the first question.
Yeah.
It is. So the second question is, are we giving the department head the authority to commit to a grant prior to that funding be approved by this body?
Uh, everything's been approved, the funding, all that. We received the money from, well, we received the, the available money is down at the state, so seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So we're saying we want to bid out the project to move forward. The biggest issue would be is if the bids came in above the seven fifty, then we'd either, we would stop it and then either come back and say it's seven seventy-five. Do you want to pay twenty-five thousand dollars of county money to move forward or do you want to stop?
Which we're going to have that process regardless of it goes, if, if they have that authority. And I have no problem with giving the department heads, we have great department heads, um, having them have the authority to sign those type of documents. My only question is, is that that funding is approved by this body in that we're not giving just for the sake of not having the discussion. Um, just I want to clarify that.
This was all approved resolutions long ago. This was the Smith Creek or the, the, the dam project, the Steve's Creek, sorry, not. The Steve's Creek, this is, I think, the third or fourth resolution on getting this process done.
So going through that, they sign the document or the signature, um, they get the bid out.
Yep.
They move forward, we get the bid, we find it's overbid, that comes back to this body for the additional funds before that project moves forward.
Yeah, the seven hundred and fifty was put in Governor Evers budget, I think.
But for, for eat, not this project, but any project. Prior to moving forward with any additional or committing to any additional expenditure over what was originally done would come back to this body and not give them the authority to sign for. Okay.
Yeah. And we made that very clear at forestry that if you, if the bids go out and it's nine hundred thousand, you don't, we don't start over.
Well, we bring it back here.
Good, just wanted to clarify.
The only thing is we're, we'll be, if we don't go with project, again, like I said before, we'll be responsible for engineering costs that have been incurred already.
Yeah. So we've already agreed via resolution to, to move forward with the engineering costs, whether we move forward or not. It would be reimbursed through the actual grant if we do the full project.
So just as an example, if it costs seven hundred and seventy-five, we'd have to come up with the extra twenty-five thousand. But if we say we're not going to come up with the extra twenty-five thousand, it might cost, it's going to cost us, say, forty thousand, because that's what the engineers have got into it so far. Just something to be aware of. Mr. Hastings.
You guys mentioned as well that this ain't going to happen until twenty twenty-six or seven. Isn't there a timeline that we have to get this done by? No?
No. It, the, the, the budget released the money to the DNR to spend on a project. It's like earmarked for that project.
Thank you.
Any further comment, discussion? Mr. Palchek?
Where did that information come from that this project has doubled already?
That was the Salberg Lake project.
That was what?
The Salberg Lake project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Passed my majority vote, twelve yes, one no for the resolution two for lower Steve Creek Flowage.
Okay, moving along, resolution number three. Designated general fund money for parcel replanting, came from forestry, then through executive, basically we're guaranteeing forestry department or okaying forestry department, the amount of money that they've gotten in revenues, they can spend up to that amount and to replant, reforest. That's all right, Nick?
Yeah, so instead of trying to put money aside every year from the sale of timber, we know that some years, especially plantation, the red pine plantations tend to be really good sales. And so those are the years that we go quite a bit over our budgeted amount in revenues. So that goes into our general fund. And then every, I think this is the third time we've done this, fourth time, every several years, we'll, the forestry comes forward and says, hey, we clear cut this spot, this red pine. We want to use the proceeds that are sitting in the general fund that would cover our lower years, those type of things to pay for this replanting. It's a multi-year process. So the first year they cut it, the second year they, well, it's cut. Then the first year they spray it, then it rots for a year and kind of cleans up. Then they got to till it and then they hand plant it. What happens with these plantations is they get cut three times. So there's a three thinning or two thinnings and a, and a cut. So they pay, they do very, very well. So we want to continue to make sure when we clear one, we, we replant them to a healthy plantation.
Motion by Spasic, second by Politek. Any discussion?
I would ask a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Barstam.
Is this expenditure covered by like crop insurance in case it would fail?
That's a good question. Like if we had a, I mean, we do get deer damage that they go replant.
But if some, some disease came through or fire wiped out the whole thing?
I would, I would guess we could turn it over to insurance and then they would review it, but we've, knock on wood, we've never had that.
I think we should ask forestry, that is a good question.
I can look into it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Bracka.
Is this resolution just authorized doing that? And then the dollar amount will be brought to the, the board or is this considered operational where they'll just give the administrative, the dollar amount they want to spend out of the general fund and?
Yeah, this would be operational that just, they're going to do these, it'd, it'd be like what you're going to do later, the amendments where they spent ten thousand, it, like I said, it's a couple of year process. So this year they'll spend ten thousand. At the end of the year, we would pull this resolution and if it's resolution ten, Kerry will put on the spreadsheet, resolution ten says that cost is covered by the general fund, we'd make the transfer and then it would offset. So this is saying going forward, we are doing this. Joe brings it forward to his committee and just says, hey, we're working on this is what it's going to cost, but this resolution gives them the authority to.
Allows them to do it, but not overspend or spend more than
We're not buying any.
Revenue generated.
Yeah, say if he was like all of a sudden, oh, if I buy this equipment to, to do this, he would have to come and go, I need a tractor or I need, yeah. That, this is the replanting process.
Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none, go ahead and vote.
Motion passed thirteen yes, zero no.
Okay, moving along, resolution number four, budget amendments for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This came from executive. Nick, you want to give us a quick overview here?
Sure. Do you want to do them all?
Sure. Motion by Culpers, second by Erickson.
Each year, our fiscal handbook that you guys put in place says that we need to go through and there's two things and this is step one. So step two is really the, the end, what it says to do is that anything that's over by ten percent or twenty-five thousand needs to come to the board in expense. Prior to doing that, we want to make sure our books are as lined, lined up to what happened for the year as possible. And so like, we wait for the audit for some things, but this gets us to a cleaner point. So what we do is we go through and like I just explained, the, we have a resolution ten that says you're going to replant forestry stuff. And Joe's expenses, he'll have twenty thousand dollars in replanting, but we didn't give him any money during the budget process because we didn't know what it was. You guys auth, authorized it via the resolution. So Kerry would go through and say, here is the twenty thousand dollars based on this resolution, it offsets. So then the next step where we say, are you over or under for the year, will be nullified by that twenty thousand. So this year we have a sheet that's attached, it's all the orange. That's in front of you. We had, if you take away the three largest overages or non-budgeted areas. We had a positive year in the general fund, so the, or close to a positive year. We had a much better budget than being short by nine hundred, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand. So there's two orange sheets, one is pre-budget amendments and one post-budget amendments. The biggest ones are your, we had forestry who was short on their stumpage by almost a half a million dollars. Again, if you look at the five-year average, we're, we're well within our budget. So that's where money comes from the general fund to offset it, which balances that budget or the budget as a whole. The other two areas are your sheriff's department, jail and sheriffs. We had several large incidents last year, which is a lot of overtime, a lot of jail time. So I think we had, we had the large investigation on highway thirteen with the, the body that was left there. We had a murder suicide up in this area and then we had Park Falls had the individual that shot a girlfriend or whatever it was. So those create a large overage in those, those areas. So between the sheriff's department, jail, that was quite a bit of the overage and then the forestry. Other areas. Some of the offices had health insurance, so like the admin office, which would be my line item. We had a new employee that took family rather than no health insurance, that's thirty-three thousand dollars. See, tax lister, we had retirees, we had overlap of employees and we had somebody that had to do the job during maternity leave. Which would actually be this year more than anything, but that, that's a little bit of that overage. Forestry, we were the four hundred below. Corp counsel, we had a vacancy for half a year last year, so we were using outside counsel. So that's why that area is over where it is. So this is a yearly process that we go through to come up or to, to reconcile the budget to all the resolutions or grants that we received. And then the next after the audit, you'll see another one that comes forward that says, here's what we took from the general fund to balance the budget.
So we're not spending any money here, we're just changing the budget projections to the actual numbers that were
Yeah, so if, if there's a whole spreadsheet, so like if you look at like general, the transfer to other funds, it was transferred prior to your capital improvement, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. It's again, a resolution that you guys passed that says, transfer this money. And we just do it all at once. We could do it every month, but then we'd be doing a resolution every month and it would just be a pain in the butt. State aids, wildlife abatement, those kind of things.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, go ahead and vote.
Resolution zero eight twenty-five passed thirteen yes, zero no.
The other thing too, to remember, this is a whole year ago already, we've already gone through another budget process. So a lot of these things that whether, like a health insurance, we got a new employee, twenty twenty-four, we didn't budget for that health insurance, but twenty twenty-five we did. So we've made the adjustments going into this year, so you wouldn't see that again in those departments.
Next up, resolution number five, amend resolution thirty dash twenty-four, highway project borrowing. This came from executive. Motion by Hordak, second by Warko. Discussion? Well, we're amending this resolution as it was originally passed. We're removing where it says proposed construction projects and adding equipment improvement program. And I'll read it therefore, now therefore be it resolved that the Price County Board of Supervisors authorizes the executive committee to proceed with the implementation of financing twenty twenty-five. Highway Department Equipment Improvement Program in a mode to exceed five hundred, not to exceed five hundred thousand, to be financed through the issuance of short-term debt and to include such debt payment in the twenty twenty-five budget as shown.
And this was for that yellow piece of equipment. And so with this, because we said it's going into an equipment improvement program, we can use the remaining money after the purchase of that first one. It was discussed quite a bit at executive and forest, or not forest, what are you guys, highway? I went to buildings and grounds next to my head, but the highway where the, the original borrowing, like here at states was five hundred thousand, the greater came in at three fifty after trade-in or however, the, the sale of that, the other greater, there's a hundred and fifty remaining. They discussed quite a bit, do we pay back the loan and lower it? We know we have equipment issues to be working on, but this is, they decided between the two committees to recommend keeping that and moving forward with a possible purchase of a tractor mower. But there's still short funding there. So tractor mower is coming in at like one ninety, they have a thirty thousand dollar trade-in. They only have a hundred and fifty thousand remaining. So there's still a shortage that the highway department will need to determine how that's funded, if it's funded.
Mr. Culpers.
Yeah, just I guess a technical question. The third whereas on my sheet here. Is there something missing? It says where is the remaining balance? What is, what is that?
That's the remaining balance from the five hundred thousand after the greater was bought. There probably should be a
There's probably more language that should be in here, right?
I'll check on that.
Okay.
Here's that.
Yeah.
It's what we had originally, we didn't, we were short on this one from the start, I think.
What, what is that supposed to say? The remaining balance, what?
I don't think it said anything. This is an amendment to the original one.
Yeah.
So I think we were supposed to discuss it and say, what, what do you want the remaining balance to do?
That's supposed to happen here?
Well, no, it never happened the first time, five hundred thousand minus whatever. And so it just has been sitting there. Right now, because we said put it in the equipment improvement program, it just leaves, you could cross off that whereas if you want to clean it up.
I, I think what Nick had said earlier, when you enumerated that, where you had that and then we had the, the three hundred and then the hundred and fifty and blah, blah, blah. And that's what we had decided. So that's
Scratch that off.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to do that officially? No? Okay. Well, we'll leave it as is because it was there the first time around. Yeah, I know, okay. Any further discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Resolution thirty dash twenty-four passed by thirteen yes, zero no, which was an amendment.
Okay, we'll keep moving unless somebody needs to take a break. Ain't nobody saying anything, so. Keep going, appointments. Veteran Service Commission appointments, Elaine Dahl, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, Richard Lapp, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, Douglas Moklin, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Travel Northwest Wisconsin Tourism Committee appointment, Jonathan MacArthur, the new director for the Phillips Area Chamber of Commerce. These are for information, we can do a blanket voice vote to approve. I think that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Drabnik, second by Spasic. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
You're confirming them by voting on it.
Sorry, I set it up as a voice vote?
Oh, okay.
We can do a voice vote. Mr. Culpers, you have some? Okay, you're getting ready to press the button. We're going to do a voice vote.
It's not gonna, not gonna happen.
All, I mean, is this, motion and second, is that valid?
Yes.
Okay. Motion, again, I'll repeat, Drabnik, second by Spasic, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Reports, annual report of wages twenty twenty-four. Okay. Miscellaneous class, I'm sorry.
I hate to be
Mr. Spasic.
Me and pointed out, is there a reason Paula's almost double for what most of us are? I just
She volunteers for a lot of.
Okay, that's fine. I just, there's a lot of expenses and whatnot, so.
I expect.
Yeah.
No, it's hand up, not hand out. That's the difference.
No, I expected that.
No, 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 I just, I mean, looking at the per diems, I mean, there's, there's a big difference there.
Yeah, so Paula's on several Health and Human Services ones, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Just bring up the question that somebody might.
I'd be disappointed if it didn't come.
I don't worry.
Yeah. He does.
No.
He does.
It's all in jest. Miscellaneous class action claim including Price County regarding in-rem property proceeds from one-one nineteen eighty-nine to four-two twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, quick update, this probably will be the last, last time you'll see this on the agenda for a long time. We have submitted what we needed to submit to legal and now it's just in their hands. We were going through our insurance company as our representative, but the, there's three insurance companies, a tollless and one independent that all represents, you know, through this process. So they all got together. They'll be putting together a defense for this class action suit and we just sit back and see what happens. But that's, that's all the updates I have is we've submitted what we had to submit, which was a list of our sale, our properties we sold since, for us, it wasn't so bad because it was, we've only been doing it for ten years or so. So we made a list that went out and I'm guessing this will be a two or three-year process before we know anything.
Any questions or comments? Next item, under miscellaneous legislative luncheon meeting update. We're going to go ahead and reschedule that because none of the legislators were able to make it. This is the one that was scheduled for April twenty eighth. Which would have been a week, week from Monday, y'all had invites to it, but it's been canceled.
Yeah, so we reached out to all the legislators. We did hear back right after we canceled it from Tammy Baldwin's office. They had a representative and then one other office did reach out, but we didn't think it was, we'll just reschedule the next one. The attempt will be at Solberg in July. I'm meeting with a lot of the legislators between now and July, so I can kind of prod them about it. And we're also going to take a little bit different approach. We're going to work more directly with Rob and Jesse James, Rob Summerfield and Jesse James, and say, what date works for you guys, rather than us picking a date and say, does this work? If we can get those two, that would be our local reps. The other ones tend to have a representative that can come to the meeting. So we'll try again in July and see how it goes.
Less chance of a snowstorm then too.
Mr. Barstam, do you have something?
I have more information on what this is going to look like. Is it just going to be, it's going to be at a Solberg? So.
Yeah, or whatever location. So this, the first one was
It's going to be an outside venue.
Yep, under the new pavilion.
Who else is going to be there besides the county board?
Yep, so we've invited, we'll invite the county board, we invited our department heads, we'll have scheduled presentations by a couple of department heads. So depending on what the hot topic during the budget process or whatever that, not our budget process, the state budget process, so requests. Whether it's mental health, that's who we were going to do this time was Chana with mental health, Sarah Reese with just Health and Human Services. And then Kayla with children and youth costs. So they would do a presentation to the legislator saying, when you're looking at the budget, and then Kayla with Children and Youth Costs. So they would do a presentation to the legislator saying, when you're looking at the budget, this is what we're hoping to address because this is eating our budgets alive. We need help. We don't have the services. We've also then said that each legislator would get a time to talk about their, their platform. So if Tom Tiffany wanted to talk about wolves or Tammy wanted to talk about the earmarks for projects, that would be their time.
So questions to them will be from department heads.
And board members. So it would just be like a town hall meeting, but it's, it's private.
So we could ask them any question that I desire.
Yep. So you would be able to, when Tom Tiffany's representative's up there, you could say, what are you guys working on this or how are you working on that?
It'll be individual. It won't be a group type of question.
It'd be like a, we'll set up chairs or like a presentation.
I think we're getting that out. You're going to be asking the questions as an individual, not as a county representative.
Yes, yes. You will just as an individual bring up things.
And are we going to be in violation of any kind of quorum, open meeting laws?
We checked into that. We're good on that because it's not a, we're not discussing county business. You're just saying for my area, this is important as a community member. What you're alluding to, Alan, we will put it on the next executive committee meeting is the WCA is looking for county boards to sponsor resolutions that they should be working on. Yep. Yep. So that, that's a separate issue.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm concerned. I'm really concerned that the taxpayers are funding this and they're not allowed to come. It's treading, you know, in waters where we could be illegally talking as well. And I don't think it's right that we're having a meeting that they're not invited. And secondly, Nick is, this is Nick's idea. He shouldn't be the one bringing it to the table. It's supposed to be a supervisor.
It's been talked about at previous board meetings.
No, just once Paula and Joe gave a, their interpretation, thought it was a good idea. Other than that, no.
So do you want further discussion and board consensus as to if we should do this or not? Or what do you recommend? Or what do you, what are you thinking?
I would recommend to invite the public to such a meeting. There's a, a lot of ways you can do this where it'd be profitable for everybody and I think, yeah, I'm concerned.
Is there any, anybody else have thoughts regarding that? Mr. Barkstrom?
I don't, I don't have any issues with, because we're, this is a representation kind of government. We each represent a thousand people. I don't expect a thousand people to show up from my constituents. That's what representation is.
Anybody else? Mr. Hordak?
I, I would just be concerned that it would become a political issue there. And, and I just think we're not going into it politically. We're just going into questions. And, and if you come with questions from your constituents, that would be fine, too. But I think if you open the door for it to be a public forum, it could be, parking lot could be packed full. You could have protests. I, I, I mean, all these kinds of things.
Is there anybody, any other comments?
We're involved in the federal. We're involved in the state and us as a county board legislature. We're all working together. We should all be reaching out to our senators and our assemblymen as well. I mean, as a, because it's all intertwined. It's all spider webbed together. I think it's a bad idea to uninvite the public.
Mr. Paul, check.
I don't have a problem with just the, the board members being invited and, and some of the township people. If you invite the, the public to this, public, they do have listening sessions from time to time where the public is invited. But at gathering like this, I can see nothing but turning into a brouhaha. If floodgates are thrown open and everybody's invited.
This is something new. It's not, it goes against open meeting laws. And there's two statutes that it's violating. The one I haven't written down, and if you're interested, I can send them to you. It's just not a good idea and it goes against parliamentary procedure.
Well, I guess.
What are the issues on the table? What do you want to address?
I'm on board with it because for one, the, there's a legal counsel. They do this in Sheboygan County, for example, and their legal counsel said that there's nothing, we're not violating any rules. Ms. Hordak?
Plus, if you remember what, what Nick said, this is, focus is going to be on mental health. And so, and I know Jesse James and Rob both have, have, that seems to be on, on the table for them as far as that. And we have issues in our county for that. So as, as far as being with the Health and Human Services, I think this is a great idea to bring it forward to everyone on our county board to be up on what's going on in Madison, in the federal.
Well, and as elected officials, the public elects us to do this type of business so they don't have to. I mean, they, they should be informed and give us their thoughts, but so they, we're, we're their representatives.
So are we going to record it? Minutes taken?
No minutes. It's not, it's not an official board meeting or committee meeting or any type of meeting like that.
Against the way that you're setting this up. It's.
And one more thing, I, you know, I visit my towns and their meetings. This is a great place to go there, get all the information and then go visit the constituents you represent and share with them what, what's going on with the mental health issue.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on then. As far as legislative luncheon meeting update, committee of the whole, board chair report. Not to steal Dennis' thunder, we're, we are working on replacing the veteran service officer. That's all I will say. I'm part of that group, so that's been on my agenda when, when it comes to interviews and applicants. Nick and I had a phone call and I apologize to Jeff. He should have been included as chair of forestry. We met or talked with the new company just to find out what's going on with carbon credits. And it's still in process, no definite timeline. Before the end of the year is what I got out of it. It's not costing us anything, but there's nothing in concrete as far as when we're going to see revenues. Worked on the items, ordinances and resolutions that were on today's agenda. Also been part of the group discussions on various items, including employee issues, the class action lawsuit regarding REM proceeds and other stuff that we talked about already today in the agenda. Is there any questions, comments regarding my report? My performance? Okay, we'll forget that last comment. All right, we'll move on to committee, county administrators' report, twenty twenty-five financial summary updates.
So you should have gotten your packet the first quarter, so March twenty twenty-five, the end of March twenty twenty-five. The report, it went to executive. We went over it. Right now, no major, nothing jumping out. Jail, Sheriff's Department jail, we're, we're starting to house people out of county again. Just means we're, we have lots of individuals that we're detaining right now. Sheriff's Department has had a few large incidents already this year. So again, overtime, lots of people, lots of, lots of wage issues there going into for, end of first quarter. We do have a few officers that will be out on leave, so then we'll have people that are backfilling, which is time and a half because that's just, you're working somebody else's shift or additional hours. So this year, it'll be, it'll be not much different than last where we had some overages in the sheriff's department. Buildings and grounds, we're working on a couple of projects that we brought to the committee. We're not sure where that'll end up yet and where, what the funding will be because we don't have the exact costs. And that, we've talked about them a couple of committee meetings now in a row. We did have a power or switch, electrical switch go out that did cause about twenty thousand dollars in damage to, between pumps and air conditioner for the, the IT room. So that, we did turn that over to insurance. We'll see what happens with that, but we do have to replace that pump. They were sixty years old, so they're not, not new pumps. We're going to replace the one under the insurance and then through the budget process, we'll work on the backup pump or the secondary pump, which is currently the primary pump that's running. Airport, we had a water leak up at the second terminal, the old terminal. We went to have American Asphalt use that during the construction process, so they love to have a construction trailer up here. When Roger walked in and with Preston, there was like two inches of water that was in there. They had been in there the previous week and there was no water, so it happened within a week that they were there. We did get denied the insurance claim because it was a vacant building for more than sixty days. So even though we checked it, insurance does not cover vacant buildings. So we, we dried it out. We haven't done anything with it. We were going to go to highway to recommend that the, we gut the, the building and replace, or not replace it, but turn it into storage with garage sheds or shed doors, whatever garage doors on two sides of the building so that we can pull in and out of that. It's, that's where we would have went with it even if insurance would have covered it, but now we just have to wait and do it through the budget process going forward. So we'll keep you updated on that.
Yeah, going to like the BOA stuff then, like the.
Hmm, I don't know yet. Yeah, so we'll talk to Carl if there's a project we can put that in to get matching funds. If not, it would just have to, like our capital improvement projects or yearly projects. The only thing, we'll do all the work once it gets cleaned out, but we do want to bring in like Restore U or a company, the master cleaners is who, who dried it out. We would want them to do the tear out because it, I mean, water was from the floor to the ceiling. It's moldy. We don't have the capacity to, to gut that based on the condition. After they gut it, though, we could do a lot of the work ourselves.
And just regarding BOA, I know they used to cover buildings for snow removal equipment. So they might.
We'll, we'll try to see what.
We keep a snow blower in there, we might be okay.
A little push one. Yeah, and we did buy a truck with a plow through their, their program. So, yeah, so we'll, we'll work on what, that's why we're not moving forward with anything because we're looking at our options. Health and Human Services is the page two. We're seeing some increase in the children and youth area costs, but that's just at Health and Human Services, we talked several times that there is, there are a few families that we're working with right now that are just higher cost than, than typical. Behavioral health, though, is way below last year at this time. Other funds, animal control. The new contract with Catkins is working great. We are seeing an increase of animals again. We had a huge increase last year, but it's, it's maintaining. We're seeing a lot of abandoned pets based on death. So individual, older individuals are passing away and they're surrendering, the pet gets surrendered. Lot of animals at large. That's been probably Mindy's biggest chasing animals at large, as in dogs, not large animals, but animals at large. We did have one hoarding case that has been completed out of Fife Field area. They had several animals that we had detained for thirty days during the, the hearing. So some costs there. Highway's been doing well. Cash, as you can see, we're about fourth thou, or form, three million dollars less than last year at this time. A lot of that has to do with paying our loans. So if you look at April, you can see we're at twelve million compared to March, which is twelve million. It's because we made our loan payment in March last year and settlements. So I'm not, not worried that we're three million dollars less than last year at this time. We just got those payments out the door quicker. Price County sales tax year over year. So December, we finished December twenty twenty-four with one point four million, just, we're six dollars short of one point four one million, which is above our budget by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We were, we're now kind of plateaued. We were thirteen thousand less than twenty twenty-three. However, twenty twenty-five has started off really well. We're ten percent more, nine point five percent more than the prior year in January. So little ups and downs, just depends on when people pay their sales tax, that it gets reported. We're always two years behind, or two months behind to get that funding from the state. Stumpage, it was a great winter so far. We're at four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, almost four hundred and sixty thousand in stumpage as of March, which is twice what we were at this time last year. We have one of our largest sales going out. You guys approved it last meeting. It was minimum of seven hundred and, right at that seven hundred, six hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred thousand, which is a large portion of the budget. So usually we see a little bit above those minimums, which is helpful. We have about two million dollars of outstanding sales at this time. High cost placements, we talked about this. February, we have a hundred and twenty-three thousand compared to forty thousand the year before. So we're two hundred percent over last year and that has to do with, I think, two families we're working with. Those costs go up real quick when we have high cost placements. Behavioral health, we're forty-seven percent less than last year at this time. And again, classification where it is, what we've been doing because it's so back and forth depending on where you can classify it. We've seen where children and youth is way down, but behavioral health is way up. We see where behavioral health goes way down, children and youth goes way up. So between the two, we've hit our budget number each year.
I do have a question on the budget. Is that the right budget number for this year? This is the same as the year before and we've been way over. I know you dropped the other one. Should, is that the right number, two eighty-six?
Yes, because we left the behavioral health where it was because we, with the new state budgets, we're seeing additional funding, so it won't be levied money. So we're, we're, we didn't want to, if we would have put it in here as a higher budget, because we don't have the state offset yet, we couldn't put a revenue. So we left it at this level, hoping that there'll be a, say, a hundred thousand dollars more from the state, which then would be that revenue to make the levy zero, the levy impact zero.
Okay, because we were eight oh four and then five seventy-eight and then we're two eighty-six. Will that revenue thing show up on his chart, though? Is this, this is just the expense. So we could still be way over.
Yes.
But if we may have revenue to offset it, that's what you're saying.
Yep.
Okay.
And a lot of times we do have revenue that offsets because if Medicare, Medicaid pays, family insurance pays, some of these costs get, we're not, when we go over budget, doesn't necessarily mean we went over budget on our levy. We went over what we expected it to be, but our revenues may have also coincided with that, maybe not at a hundred percent, but at forty percent or fifty percent. High cost placements, we did. Health insurance, we're in the, the positive, so that's good. We're seventy thousand, four hundred and seven dollars to the positive. Again, going self-funded was probably one of the better decisions to manage our health insurance. The school, they just got for July twenty-six percent renewal. No matter what they, they, they have to make major changes based on that. Where if they started to say, oh, we'd love to use Tailored Health, right? There's a huge savings to us to be doing that. They're fully funded. So the fully funded company goes, I don't know if it's going to help or not. And if it does, it just helps our bottom line. So being self-funded, we can make changes and we can see those changes right away and recognize those savings. So Tailored Health has been huge on this year's savings because we pay cash for that. Any questions?
I see no questions, so we'll move on. Committee chair reports, administration. Mr. Warko?
We have not met. I canceled the last meeting, so we have not met since, so there's nothing to report.
Okay. Moving on to executive. Last meeting, which was last week, we discussed in-rem items and how taxes, property tax bills are coming in and being paid and that kind of stuff. Also talked about forestry and buildings, committee issues, mostly building and grounds as far as like the boiler exhaust system that needs to replace and electrical panel. Those are big ticket items, so we're going to have to figure out how to pay for them going down the road. We, we also talked about the streamlining the tax procedure for hangars at the airport because they were personal property, can't charge for. Can't charge for personal property anymore. So we're having, uh, the lawyers, um, figure out how to put it. So it'd be like a regular tax bill. And then if they don't pay, it'll go in REM in that process. Then lastly, we, we discussed, which we are brought up the lawsuit regarding the, the in rem properties from 89 to 22. Any questions? Okay. Forestry parks, buildings and grounds.
Okay. Not a lot for me to talk about anymore. Nick and Brian pretty much covered most of it, but in the meantime, you know, Josh and his, and his crew, their buildings and grounds are kind of like firemen. They're constantly responding to the next emergency and they've had several here with the electrical and, and the exhaust and the building out at the airport. And so in between that, they try and get as much maintenance stuff done as they can, including the old treasures office, I believe. That's the only one nobody didn't talk about. Yeah. Yeah. I think they're pretty well wrapped that up now and, and they did a really good job. We got the talented crew there of those guys, you know? I can't always just say they spend money because it's not their fault, but, but they do good work there. We're lucky to have that crew. Uh, moving on to forestry and parks. Uh, so we talked a lot about Lower Steve Creek Flowage. One thing that was, was kind of left out there in this process, we're still waiting for a DNR permit there. So all the stuff is on hold until the DNR gives us a permit. It's got something to do with the wild rice. It's in that flowage. So kind of, we can't put that out for bids until we get that, that permit from the DNR. It's got to do with the wild rice. I don't remember the name of the committee, but, but it's a DNR committee that, that has to sign off or bless it or may do some studies. So the chances of that project even being started this year are, are getting slim to zero. So that'll be deferred, I, I would assume. So, uh, the Solberg Lake campground project, we did let the bids for most all of that work that we had permits for, we're waiting on a delineation for wetlands permit there as well to do the trail out the back. But, but we did let the rest of the bids for the electrical, the septic, the power, all the gurk work and all that, the wells, the wells are both drilled already. So, um, so we're moving along on that project. And hopefully, I mean, with a stroke of luck, we might complete that project yet this year. Uh, we talked about timber planting. Well, Joe was getting ready to schedule the guys to come out to the 172 acres. And I believe that was the Lugerville grade job that we're getting ready to replant. It's 172 acres that prior last year, we would have approved the funding for that. So that's what he's getting ready to start. And it's kind of neat. If you've never watched, check with Joe and get the schedule. It's, it's neat to watch 25, 30 guys line up and start planting trees. Yeah. What else did he have on his notes? Not, not a lot other than that, I guess. We're, we're getting ready to start all our, our summer work mowing. They're working out at the parks, cleaning up and whatnot right now. So getting ready for our summer, summer help to start and start taking care of all the parks. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Moving on, health and human services, Ms. Hordick.
We did not have a meeting this month. Our next meeting will be May 14th.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, highway and transportation, Mr. Polichek.
Boy, that works so well for Dewey and, and Paul. I think I'll try the same thing. The highway crew has cleared the right of way and installed bird, bird netting for the county old bridge construction project. The old bridge replacement project was awarded to sheet piling services for the amount of 1,532,053. This bridge replacement is a hundred percent funded by state and federal dollars. They also are clearing right of ways on county trunk highway 86 and, and county trunk, state highway 86 and county trunk highway H. The crew has been steaming frozen culverts and boom mowing on county trunk highway H and state highway eight. American asphalt has been awarded state highway 13 and Phillips project, and it will include curb sidewalks and new pavement. State highway 13 will remain open during most of this construction. A temporary detour will be in place for the excavation where roadway settlement is occurring. Shop, two freight liner chassis were delivered to universal truck for plow package installation. These trucks are expected to be completed by late 2025. The build of the new cat grader is complete and is being shipped to the Fabik store in Eau Claire. Fabik will install the snow wing and prepare it for delivery. Equipment needed this spring has been brought to the shop. Mechanics are checking them over before they are needed. A spring auction will be set up this month to list trucks nine, 46 and 55 and other unused items. Airport has been working on fixing runway lights, cutting trees along the fence line while making repairs to the fence. Dams are all in good overall condition. So far it has been a mild winter and have not had to saw gates very much, which is easier on hoists and chains. Job's DNR inspections were due March 27th and was awarded to Morgan Parmley. Weemers dam may need to replace some of the cat lock this year. Prentice 2024 DNR inspection directive, some minor concrete cracks and spalls will need to be fixed and patched. Also some of the fence and rip rap needs to be fixed from the 2023 spring flooding. Sailor Creek will need to have some rip rap and topsoil added to fill low spots in the dike that are hard to maintain and mow. It will also need new chain hoist purchased. Solberg has some top concrete stop log slots that are deteriorating more than a repair can make with full pool water and maybe future rehabilitation. Are there any questions?
You mentioned first, uh, about a, a bridge, uh, for a million dollars. Where is that?
That's the county trunk old bridge. We've looked at that several times on our road tour. Yeah.
All right.
One, I got one comment that, that greater, we got that here in the States before the terror picked in, right?
Yep.
Cause that came from Brazil.
Came from Brazil.
We purchased it before that too. Um, the other thing too, that I don't know if Larry knows, but you brought to my attention. So if you follow our airport, uh, and the, the funding for projects out there, there was question on crosswind runways that they weren't going to be funded, nor were they, you know, so we'd have no way to, it'd be all county money to repair them. That has been reversed or now it is available for crosswind runway projects, which is huge for us because we would have ended up closing that runway eventually if, without the, the additional funding, because projects are just too expensive not to have that, that matching fund, those matching funds.
Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, land use and UW extension, Mr. Barkstrom.
Yeah. We held our, uh, regular meeting on March 20th. We held one public hearing for a special exceptions permit for the purpose of building a garage and on county trunk W to the 60 feet to the center line of the, of the highway. No correspondence was received back on the matter. The exception permit was approved. We approved a land division, uh, in the town of Worcester and one land division in the town of Spirit. Both land divisions were approved. We approved a refund for a, a land use permit that was not used. Uh, that would end the land use report. There were no report from land conservation. UW extension, uh, we held a discussion on language in the UW extension contract relative to affirmative action. No action was taken. Uh, the 4H educator summer intern is on board and working on various programs. The food wise educator classes are ongoing. The reality fair is still being planned. We will, it's going to be scheduled for in the fall. We had hoped that it was going to be this spring. But the educators who originally held the fair, this was pre-COVID, have since retired and the new curriculum is being, uh, required. Uh, the land use meeting that was originally scheduled for April has been canceled and the next meeting will be held May 22nd. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Barkstrom. Lastly, law enforcement, Mr. Polichek.
Uh, discussion on ordinance, 2023 dash oh seven, an ordinance to amend the code of the county of price by adding, uh, peace and good order article. It's over this, uh, uh, Delta eight sale in Price County. Been motion to, uh, postpone until such time that we can get information from health and human services department about the topic. Staffing update. There's currently one opening for sheriff's deputy. Three applications for the position have been received and interviews are slated for next week. Humane officer, animal control has been busy the last few months. Some of the calls include 36 calls on CAD system, eight animal bites, 29 law records involving more in-depth crimes against animals. K-9 unit. Currently two patrol dogs at the sheriff's department, Dixon and Kane. Sheriff's deputy Craig Calzavera described how he works with his patrol dog Kane. He did this at our, our last meeting. It was very informative. Kane lives with Calzavera 24 hours a day, seven days a week, both at work and at home. Kane is trained to apprehend criminals, bite and detect drug, drugs, including marijuana, methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine and MDA. A yearly fundraiser is being planned tentatively for an August. And Nick has volunteered to be the, the bitee for that. For, for Kane to practice. Yeah, yeah.
We're going to sell tickets?
You, you gotta take one for the team, Nick. Recreation officer has been on patrol duty because we are short one patrolling officer who is deployed overseas. Equipment needs for the sheriff's department. We received a grant that will allow them to purchase more equipment. They're looking at purchasing 18 tasers. A meeting with Northway Motorola and Bugtussel is scheduled for April 15th to discuss the design and layout of cell towers for the best case scenario of coverage throughout our emergency management and law enforcement. A pepper ball gun was purchased as a non-lethal control method against violent, crimped individuals. It leaves a welt and pepper upon impact. And we had, uh, we didn't have a demonstration, but we had the display of that gun. Nobody volunteered. That's all I have. Are there any questions? Next meeting is scheduled for May 1st.
Mr. Barkstrom.
Larry, uh, you mentioned that you were having discussions on Delta eight. Uh, didn't we have a discussion on that prior and we decided not to move forward? Isn't there a, isn't there a, a period of time that has to pass before you can bring that topic up again?
Uh, there is not. We checked on it. Nick had court counsel check on it and there is not.
Okay. The hand, the county handbook says you have to wait two years to amend it.
Well, this was in two, in 2023. So I think we have more than passed our two-year test.
That was in 2024. There's a waiting period of 90 days before it actually got enacted. So the, the different distributors around the colony could, uh, get rid of it. Isn't that correct?
I don't know where you're finding in the handbook that we have to wait two years for anything. If a, if a chair of a committee wants to put the same resolution on agenda every month, even though it fails every time they can, if a chair of a committee says, no, I don't want to put something on a agenda, doesn't go on the agenda. So when I talk to corp counsel, the, the, the reason you wouldn't put anything in place for a timeline is if you passed an ordinance that was, or a resolution that wasn't what you expected or needed, you could turn around five minutes later and change it to what you needed it to say or do. Uh, so there would be a danger of putting something in place.
Even with an ordinance?
With anything. Yeah. So now if you change it, it still takes publication and timeline, but it's not. You could bring an ordinance forward every day, the, or every committee meeting. The problem is there's, in order to pass one, you have to have a public hearing. You have to have class three notice. You have to have all there. It creates a timeline, but to talk about it, you could talk about it every committee. And it could fail every time it's brought forward, but they could bring it forward again, every meeting.
Are you guys bringing it forward again, next meeting?
I, it was postponed to be put on the next agenda. I.
Is it going to be on the next agenda, Larry?
Not until it's on health and human services.
Well, it.
We're going to have.
Services is doing a presentation.
Presentation and then.
And they've requested that that presentation be done at the law enforcement committee meeting, which would be June, uh, which then it would be back on the agenda for discussion.
Who's going to do that?
The health and human services staff.
Which one?
Which one?
Yeah. Who's going to present?
The public health department.
Yeah.
I just looked into Suzie Daniels, uh, grant that she just, uh, applied for or got from the substance abuse and mental health. I think it's a great big conflict of interest that we're trying to sell drugs on one hand, and then, uh, taking money for substance abuse out of the other. You can look it up. It's S A A M H S dot com. Substance abuse, the mental health services where that grant came from. Like to see that could put the rest here, Larry, if you're, uh, since you're in control of that.
Mr. Koppish.
Yeah. Uh, just a comment. Um, you know, we've had people coming and wanting us to revisit that issue. And after.
There's just one.
Well, one person. Yeah. But member of the public and, and so, um, rather than, uh, just ignore it. After the, one of the law enforcement committee meetings, not the last one, the one before, I went to the, asked the health department to just give me an update on the health aspects of the issue. And there's a lot of information there. And I think it's important that we have that information. There, there's more to this than just adults dealing with this stuff. There's all kinds of stuff here from public health. So I think that information the board should have.
Yeah. If you go to that website, it talks even about the marijuana gummies and stuff.
Oh, yeah. 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 It's amazing. I was, I, I, I didn't realize all this stuff. I guess I live in the sheltered world, but, um, it would be good for everybody to have that information in addition to what we already know. So that's what's going on here. I mean, I don't know that anything's going to change, but we're going to get more information. So.
Hordick.
I'd like to make a comment here as far as concerns and accusatory comments regarding, and throughout the county, accusatory comments, uh, regarding taxpayers wasting money. And I look around here at my colleagues, my supervising comment colleagues, who many of them chair a committee. Many of them have to meet with their department of which they are the chair of that committee. It's not something that we do willy nilly. We don't set these agendas up and just say, yeah, let's have a meeting, you know? No, we actually spend time talking with the department heads before we decide putting an agenda together. And so when I look at my schedule this last month, how many different meetings were not, they were canceled. And I say, yay, that's good. And our taxpayers should know that. We are doing this to make sure that we're not wasting money and coming with frugal ideas or whatever, or ideas that are just, we could have talked about that at another meeting. So, and I hope you're listening as well, that this is what, this is what this is about. We are here to, to support our community and our county. We are here to bring information to our county. And there are times that we won't have a meeting and we won't waste taxpayers' money that way. So I would hope people that are speaking to this and out there and listening to the social media that's out there. This committee, this county board, I think, does a really good job of making sure that we don't waste our taxpayers' monies. Having meetings that we could hold off for another month. There, I just had to say that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Koppish.
I suppose now is not a good time to ask for harassment pay.
I didn't know there was such a thing. And you're right. It's not a good time. It's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, but I agree. I think, uh, we need to look at what we're having meetings about, but we also need to make. but we also need to make informed decisions, not just willy-nilly.
That's the importance of following parliamentary procedure, especially with ordinances. Nick pointed out the importance today that that gets followed, and these discussions are being put to an end instead of just weighing wasting taxpayer dollars, putting meetings together over one issue. One ordinance that's been talked about fourteen times, and it's not all the minutes.
Okay, if there's nothing else, uh, we'll convene out of the committee of the whole. Date of next meeting as of right now is May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, nine AM here. I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.